Ames, how you doing?
We're on.
Hey Jared, we're up.
Okay, the red light's on. Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll have a motion to reconvene this board meeting of the board supervisors.
Make a motion, we open up the board supervisor reconvene?
Okay.
I thought you just called it door.
Well, we reconvene, call it door, all together.
Aye.
All right.
I second.
Okay. Most of us, Mr. Will Cox, second Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay. Where do we want to start? Mr. Slade, do you like to kick us off here?
He looked up quick.
Since I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Yeah, you wasn't here at the last one, man.
Well, at the last meeting, we will come together with some numbers. Bob, would you like to start, come forth?
Yeah, at the last meeting, it was recommended that we come up with a plan based on conversations with the fire chief. I think everybody got a copy of the plan, changed over the day several times. I think the final plan is what we received. We opened it up for comments from the fire chiefs, the fire departments, or their representative. The only feedback that we got was one recommendation that actually changed the percentage to a higher percentage. So, you know, we have been contacted with nothing else, no other recommendation.
The percentage in terms of runtime?
From, I think eighty-five to ninety percent on the overall call volume.
Right.
So where did we leave it?
We wanted to try to go ninety and then knowing that some of that may not be, if I'm right, that was not practical, but at least you want to start somewhere high and work your way down.
Well, it could be ninety percent based off of what time we give, you know, the practical time. Right?
Yeah, well, that's based on ninety percent, you know, run calls and, you know, with, you know, very limited exemptions. And like I said, y'all have all got a, you know, a copy of all those. Like I said, you've read through those, you know, it kind of gives you the recommendations for the exclusions and, you know, everything else.
Okay, so you have, do you have anything, Bob, that will break down like what we had last time? As far as, I know you had come up with some maps and stuff like that, as far as...
I didn't bring a map, but we had it as far as a description.
Right.
Jurisdictions. That was included on the draft of the recommendations. District one would be Reservoir Fire, Flowood Fire, Pearl Fire, Richland Fire. And that's at ninety percent of the calls dispatch have transport unit on scene within fifteen minutes. Ten percent of nine-one-one calls dispatch transport seen within a maximum of twenty-five minutes. District two was Lake Harbor and Leesburg. The same numbers there. District three would be Langford, Evergreen, Pilahatchee. District four would be Walters, Shell Road, Robin Hood, Cato and Puckett. District five Monterey, Starr, Cleary, Florence and Southwest. And like I said, we've got, you know, the exemptions and Brett and I got with the fire departments, we crunched up some numbers. And just based on last year's numbers and the numbers that we have this year, call volume across the county, we're anticipating right now at the five-month number that we got and looking at that and knowing that the call volumes increase over the summertime, right now we're at a fourteen percent increase for just the five-month period. But we anticipate, and historically, the call volume goes up about ten percent in the summertime. So, we're estimating and based on the numbers, you're looking at a twenty-five percent increase on call volumes, you know, for the fire departments, all fire departments across Rankin County. This year.
So you're saying we're going to have a twenty-five percent increase from last year?
Yes.
For all fire trials or aimless calls?
Well, it's all calls that the fire department receives.
That's pretty much every year, it's a twenty-five percent increase, it's been like a...
It has been over the, well, it's about fourteen, fifteen percent last year.
Right.
And it's growing, you know, each year. But this year, we expect it to be at a twenty-five percent growth rate.
Okay.
Actually, I thought it was a little more than fourteen percent here comparing to some of the numbers that you all have given out.
Yeah, it's fourteen percent right now.
Okay.
And that's from October to March one.
Okay. But that's over the entire...
Like I said, historically, if we run it out over the year, you know, based on last year's number, and, you know, we're figuring, you know, just roughly anywhere from a seven to a ten percent margin of error for the call volume increase, then add that back into the fourteen percent, you're looking at somewhere between twenty-one and twenty-five percent increase on the call volume.
Okay. All right.
Well, what would you suggest as a solution then, after everything you've heard?
Well, I mean, like I said, you know, the recommendations have been sent in by the fire chiefs, the fire departments. Everybody wants, you know, what's best and, you know, these recommendations were made with, you know, no, no political, you know, this is, to be honest with you, if I had the money and I was going to design a plan for myself and my family, this is what I'd want.
Right.
So it's gonna, you know, it's really gonna drop back to, you know, just like everything else. What can we get, you know, what can we afford for the service we want? You know, I know there's some give and take in there. Like I said, you know, the firemen, you know, the fire chiefs are all, you know, realistic, but we also want, you know, once again, the highest service. Because every time these guys go out, you know, they're the ones stuck on that call, you know, with the patient. These are all, you know, people in their community. I know y'all, a lot of you guys get the call secondhand, but, you know, we pretty much get it, you know, firsthand. And I get it both ways. I get it from, I get it from the fire chiefs and from the citizens. Well, three ways really, because I get it from y'all too, so.
What, well, with all this being said, and if y'all seen, I mean, if y'all seen any type of, you've heard it, what would y'all, what do y'all propose as AMR? As far as...
Stan, y'all seen, I guess you saw what Bob had, I guess, sent out an email to all of us? Is that what, okay, okay.
Or you brought a book, I just wanted a few comments.
What we did, we took the plan that Bob had emailed out and we put, had our guys that do system design, doing everything, and then took it to our finance guys and had them see what their cost was versus what we can, or what we can bring in off of the revenue side for transports at their heart. And if you look at the first page, it's the one that the fire chiefs and the one that was in the email.
How about the second page?
On the second page, option B. To do one-hundred percent of everything that was asked, we pushed about fourteen trucks in the county that would have to be dedicated to certain areas, because you would have to put trucks out to basically cover dirt, which roughly drove to about twenty-six hundred and fifty or so unit hours a week, what we call staff unit hours. To meet the ninety percent obligation in the city and the ninety percent obligation in the county, the subsidy for that type of system with the limited exceptions and everything else that they warrant in there is five-point-three-one million dollars a year.
That was the one that...
That was the one that we got emailed to us.
Have you seen that, Bob? Have you seen that?
I didn't, I didn't see any numbers, but, you know, that sounds about right, just from, you know, me talking with, you know, you know, just other people, that's probably about right.
Pretty close.
Yeah, same numbers. I mean, you know, they could vary just a little bit, but very, I mean, those are realistic numbers based on, based on that type of performance.
Right.
Currently, what are we?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars a year, yeah, okay.
So then I took, I took the, on option B, I took, took the recommendations from the fire guys and what Bob gave us, and I said, okay, what if we didn't put an ambulance in every one of those mapped jurisdictions that we were emailed by Lance and him? And I said, what if we just did ninety percent in the unincorporated area overall? Have certain grids to go by and did the ninety percent in the cities? This model is built on an average of about seven and a half ambulances a day. And it's eleven hundred, little, roughly a little over eleven hundred unit hours a week. And to meet the ninety percent obligation that they're requesting, the subsidy comes out to one-point-one-three-five million.
Okay, say that again for me, what does that cover?
That's doing exactly what they're asking for with the exception, it changes one part. Instead of the Lake Harbor and Leesburg having a grid by themselves, a response grid, and the Walters and whoever else that they match together having one by themselves. It's measuring compliance measures on the unincorporated as one whole grid. So we would report our response compliance based on that one whole target. Instead of breaking it up into the smaller target.
Municipalities as one, including Reservoir and the counties as one, is that what you're... So two zones.
I know it's hot. We're trying to get there.
Who brought that door open and kicked the heat on?
Man, those numbers.
I know y'all are firemen and y'all are used to heat, but man alive, y'all are probably burning up like us.
I think it's just the numbers we've looked at.
I think so. Those numbers really turn the heat up.
And the third option that we did, option C, just to put something else out there for y'all to look at, is kind of like what we have currently, we just moved some stuff around. Instead of the circumference zones that we took on under the Acadian contract, we moved the reporting to the municipalities and the county, unincorporated as one zone. Did the ten minutes, eighty percent in the cities, twenty minutes, eighty percent in the unincorporated. The other details that we ran the model off of are listed under section two and three. And that subsidy was at a breakeven mark of what you pay right now. And please understand that these are just benchmark areas. This is what we were emailed and then we made a middle ground version based on what we were emailed. And then we made a version based on what subsidy outlet that y'all have to turn for.
Well, this says over four calls, it's an exception.
That's what's in there now.
Well, I'm pretty sure we know, we know we don't want to go with what we got now.
So option B is four simultaneous in the municipal and two simultaneous in the unincorporated? So you're looking at six, basically?
Correct.
But you obligated seven and a half, looks like seven and a half vehicles or so?
Seven and a half at minimum, but as many as it takes to meet the obligation.
Got you, okay.
Any, any comments?
Yes, sir.
I'm just a concerned citizen with a little bit of experience.
Yep.
I would wonder from both Paul and Brandon, how many times a week they have four or more calls simultaneously? That'd be a good question tonight.
Okay.
A good answer.
Well...
It's Paul here.
Well, that's probably daily, huh? Are you talking about ambulance calls?
Yes.
How many?
At any given period where it's four or more at the same time.
Since they've had the new, since they've had Pafford?
No, just in general.
In general?
Historically, and I don't know serving both.
Right.
But historically, how many times during a given week do you have three or four trucks out simultaneously?
Right.
And it's pretty awful.
Yeah.
He used to be the fire chief.
Okay.
So it was ours, you might want to think about that as well.
Hmm. Okay. So was that four with all municipalities, that's four with all, I mean, that's four complete?
Yes, because the plan that we were emailing said five simultaneous in all municipalities for the perfect system that they wanted. And then when we dropped it down to try and bring the costs down some, we had to play with some certain areas and it brought that down to four.
So you're only dropping one from the A plan, from what was asked?
Okay.
Oh, hey Fred?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you give me a number of calls we were having the other day, call volume at one time in the county?
Yeah, we had, we had nine calls going on in Rankin County at one time, Sunday, sorry, Monday. When was that? Monday, I think. Monday, had nine calls going on in Rankin County at one time.
What time was that, about?
Five o'clock, maybe, something like that, five to, what was it, five p.m.?
The week going in, is that?
Yeah, week going in.
So, yeah, you're, I mean, you're, probably your seven to eight o'clock in the morning, then your five o'clock in the evening, and then also your lunchtime is probably your high-volume calls, I'm sure. You have more vehicles on the road, I'm sure. I mean, I'm just, no, really?
It depends on, it depends on time of year. So many different seasonal variations.
Sometimes the morning's too bad, sometimes the afternoon's too bad, it's really not a...
Hit and miss.
Yeah.
Makes me not want to get my fourteen-year-old any license. Well...
Well, y'all see what we're up against.
Has anybody got a silver bullet on the best case scenario and not breaking the bank?
Did I see, Chip, did you, yeah, I thought I saw you come in. Hey, just want to tell you, hey.
And I guess that's what, you know, I even said at the last meeting, you know, it kind of boils down to money. And I think Mr. Bill said the same thing, it just boils down to money.
I don't know what that's really.
I'd say on a regular basis, we got six or eight calls going at one time, all the time, in vocal town days sometimes.
All over?
All over.
Yeah, I would say you...
And I don't hear the municipalities.
Right.
And when we're running three and four fire departments at one time, and then you got municipalities, you know, by the time you look at all them, they're going to be running three or four at the same time, usually. You figuring the municipalities, that nine wasn't counted, was it counted for municipalities?
Yeah, that was total in Rankin County, nine, nine total calls.
Bob, what was that number you told me the other day? I believe you told me, somebody told me compared to, number of calls Florence ran compared to...
Yeah, over the, over the past few years, Florence is right in line with Reservoir. Now, Reservoir's had a pretty good jump this year. And I didn't actually compare Reservoir's numbers, but over the past few years, Florence, you know, has covered, you know, almost as many calls as the Reservoir.
Yeah, that surprised me.
Now Florence also, you know, they get, they call based on going, you know, to help Southwest when no one's there and also, you know, they run, you know, Star and that too, so.
Right.
You know, it's not actually just inside France, so I guess y'all, you know, and everybody's got, you know, we all have mutual aid agreements with each other, so.
Yeah.
Everybody's on backup for everybody else, but, you know, if they have people available, they're going to a call.
Right. That, that was, kind of surprised me, I couldn't remember what it was, but yeah.
I think we're like two-hundred-and-fifteen runs now in a year.
Why such discrepancy in, from option A to option B, whenever you just take out the zones?
Because we're reporting independently, and if you put, to do option A, I have to put an ambulance in between Leesburg and Lake Harbor, one right there at the Walters-Pilahatchee area, one down in...
Well, you don't necessarily have to put them there, as long as you meet the guidelines.
To have them there, it's ninety percent. I have to do more than just put one in each of those zones. I have to put one in between each of those zones, because I have to backfill immediately, because the call volume is smaller in certain areas. So to be able to get a ninety percent threshold, they've got to be there instantly.
So, but what you're proposing is that you can hit those calls, what we're asking for, throwing out the zones with seven and a half ambulances?
What the system said, seven and a half minimum.
And, and get there within twenty-five minutes on the outskirts and fifteen on the municipalities.
And you're saying with them, in option B, you only took out one ambulance?
No.
No, from fourteen, fourteen little...
Seven and a half, half of them. At about four million.
What were you talking about a minute ago, you said something about one?
That's the multiple emergency.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, I see.
What, what is your normal day, and I know that's kind of, again, that's kind of a day-to-day operation. What's your normal day-to-day, how many calls in a given time, what's your...
I would say two. Right now, there's two active emergency calls in all of Rankin County, not just two. On a time where you think that there will be significant.
Right.
And yesterday at this time, there were probably six or seven.
So it just...
We've done numbers over the years, Brett and I have worked up numbers and, you know, just on call volume, on some of the different presentations I've made, y'all, you know, and you would think it's weird, you know, and we were reading that Thursday, for some reason, is one of the busiest days in Rankin County for, you know, the fire department, which, you know, in turn would give me the ambulance, but.
Right.
I would have never picked Thursday, but, you know, this year is different, you know, the other year, you know, you can't say that for sure, but I remember for some reason, when we were crunching the numbers one time, that for one particular year, it was Thursday. It was Thursday in the, you know, from, you know, from lunch to like six o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, I'd have picked Friday or something like that.
I'd have picked Friday if I rushed to the bank. Now they're rushed to a board meeting.
Stan?
Yes?
In this plan B?
B, okay.
Do you have all, am I reading this right, all the unincorporated areas would be one response region?
Correct.
Kind of like you've got now?
Correct. Well, not kind of like you've got now, right now they're in the circumference.
I guess what I'm wondering is, my question is this, when things start getting tight, are you going to start pulling all the stuff back toward Jackson again? And I'm stuck out in North Rankin County, getting forty minutes response times. It doesn't matter, because I don't have enough call volume to worry about the ninety percent.
Well, these plans would require some dedicated trucks to the unincorporated areas.
I mean, the past two weeks, y'all have had a truck pretty consistently sitting around behind this year. And I'll say, you know, our call times have gone down. My concern is with this plan A, there's pictures on that. I'm not a supervisor, I don't want to do that, but the plan B and the plan C, are these trucks going to get pulled back toward the Heinz Madison line?
They may occasionally run a call over there, but in the same token, there'd be several instances where they're running calls over here too. But at the one-point-one-million-dollar plan that you're talking about, to make ninety percent in the unincorporated area, they have to sit there a whole lot longer than they do right now, I can promise.
So can we do this ourselves cheaper and provide a better service? That was quick.
For us to, just based on, just gathering up some rough numbers, you're talking about startup cost, be somewhere around seven million dollars for equipment, you know, and personnel. We would, you know, it would go down, you know, each year, you know, for the following years, because you wouldn't have that initial startup cost, but probably two, three million dollars per year to run it. You wouldn't see a dime until about year five on starting to recover any money.
What would be your initial, what would be your initial, our initial jump in on that?
And well, and this is based on just what we were looking at, just some rough numbers. We're talking like four ambulances at that time.
Of course, how much?
Well, to start with, you're going to have to buy, we're going to have to, you're going to have to find somebody that knows how to do billing, which is going to be expensive, that's hospital billing, that's just billing, you know, to run the billing side of it. You're going to have to hire a manager, which isn't going to come cheap. You're going to have to hire, you know, a training officer.
That's four ambulances for all of Rankin County?
Yeah, that's what I was basing my...
Four for all of Rankin County?
Yeah, on the numbers that we were just talking about. Yeah, well, I'm just...
How much you say it costs for ambulance?
Probably around five million dollars.
For one ambulance?
No, no, no.
For four?
Four.
Four ambulances.
Four ambulance crews, plus you're going to have to have management, plus you're going to have to have maintenance. It's not cheap.
I don't know if that's an option there, Jay.
Well, I think I'd want some more hard numbers.
Yeah, well, I mean, just threw it out there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, now, this is, like I said, this is my best, just Googling on the internet and coming up and, you know, talking to, you know, and just about, and I'm pretty sure a lot of these guys will back me up. Almost all municipal fire departments are trying to get, you know, if they started with an ambulance service, they've been trying to get out. And I think, you know, a lot of these guys, we've had these conversations, you know, anybody, you know, if you're not in the business, it's kind of a losing proposition to get started.
I'm not speaking on behalf of Flowood, but I see the chief out there, I'm, what are you thinking?
Jeffrey can come up and talk with, talk about, you know...
I don't want no part of my own, man.
I didn't figure he did, I just, that's why I was wanting to say, I'm not speaking on behalf, but I figured Jeffrey'd say he would. I don't think that our boss would want that.
Well, a million dollars to us is kind of a no-brainer too, though. I mean, that's a third of what our jail budget is a year. I mean, that's a, that's not money you can just come up with to budget annually. Especially from a jump from twenty thousand a year to one-point-one.
Yeah, you're looking at, yeah, a jump of one-point-one, sure is.
But I would hope there's another option other than Plan B and Plan C, because C is what we got right now.
C's what you have right now, there's, I mean, like I thought, it's just a benchmark, it's all, it depends on if the county wants to put any money into the system, how much money you want to put into the system. The breakeven point for Rankin County right now to just operate, cover expenses, is five and a half ambulances, is that five to five and a half on that.
Well, what if we offered some ambulances, that we put some ambulances out in the field for you?
Cost of ambulance really isn't the biggest part, the biggest part is your payroll expenses, your write-offs, your bad debt, your billing expenses, it's getting harder and harder to collect money on emergency calls.
I mean, at the end of the day, we just want service. And, but I don't think we can pay a million dollars a year for that service. That, that's so.
Let's see, to operate one, no. Oh, an ambulance, car this one? Oh, they're roughly eighty-five or ninety-thousand dollars stripped of forces of immediate control.
Well, I mean, is there no combination of the two we could do to, whenever y'all can't get to us, that we could have some ambulances at some of the fire stations to run out there? I mean...
Run out there? You gotta have somebody qualified to be in it when it runs out there.
Yeah.
I don't know if our training, I mean, that's a good question.
There's a lot of, you know, it's not just, when we're looking at it, you know, you can, from, from the numbers I was looking at, you can put an ambulance together, get an ambulance, a good ambulance, it's going to cost you about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Because you're talking about, if you outfit it with top-of-the-line equipment, you know, one monitor on there, you're talking about twelve thousand dollars. So, I mean, you know, that's when it starts getting in. But when you start getting in the personnel side, you know, the bill, you're going to have to have a manager, you're going to have to have billing, you're going to have to have somebody that is, you know, full-time, you know, keeping everybody recertified. You know, and that's before, you know, you, we hadn't even stuck anybody on a truck yet. You know, so it's, logistically, you know, your manpower is, you know, like Stan said, you know, to get somebody that understands that billing, I'm, you know, I don't know what it would cost, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be expensive. You know, an HR person, you know, an admin person.
Well, Stan, you said this is a benchmark, so where do we go up from here?
What we go from here is, I mean, you can tell me if the county's willing to put any money into the system, how much you could put in there, and I could go back to our financial team and our system design and say, okay, they said that they can afford three-hundred thousand dollars a year, tell me what's the best... Tell me what the best we can do for three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Well.
And then they, they design the systems, they do all that, and then I'll bring it back to you.
I'm sure we can put something in it. Some of these numbers look like they might be a. I mean, that's, that's.
I think one of the gentlemen won't speak.
Do what?
I think one of the gentlemen cares to speak.
Mr. Gaines.
Okay, go ahead.
But it seems like the rural area is where the biggest problem is as far as the response, and that's where I'm at. And if you adjusted, and it may be the public opinion is not for this, if I am, where it's twenty-five minutes, if we adjusted it and massaged that up to thirty or thirty-five, I mean, if I know somebody's coming, they gonna be there in thirty or thirty-five minutes, I'm not gonna get in the car. It's the problem is when somebody's seriously hurt and you set their thirty and you wait, and you say, well, they'll be here in five, and then not, and then it's forty. You know, but can, would that help frame the price in line a lot if we moved it five or ten minutes?
Uh, it would.
I mean, it'd be better if we know we got ambulances coming in thirty-five minutes than not know it all, you know?
If we, any change to, to response time parameters or the percentage will have an impact on.
I don't.
What do you say?
You back again to, um.
Back where it was.
You back where we're off.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to look at, you know, from what they're offering, um.
Well, the, the problem.
I wouldn't pay a million dollars for Plan B, number one, because you got in there, there's two calls going on in the unincorporated areas, none of the times came.
Well, the problem with thirty-five, Steve, and whatever, thirty-five runs into forty-five. I mean, I guess it's hard to be hold it at thirty, twenty-five or thirty-five. That's the reason we're trying to bring it down to a lower, quicker, I mean, to ten minutes or whatever, and knowing, and then very likely it'd be twenty.
The eighty percent and the ninety, as long as they can move us to where we're, a hundred percent of our calls are in the eighty or ninety over, then it doesn't matter what time it is anymore. I mean, it's no.
But that's not gonna happen. If you got, if two calls going on time and time within the county, that number's not the one.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't have a plan.
That's right.
Right.
And the sprint trucks.
You have a question?
The time right there, so.
Come on, if, if we pull up on scene and we start, we've got a code, we start working CPR, thirty-five minutes and a family member's sitting there, might as well be twenty-four hours from then.
Yeah.
You know, because.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna do all we can, but we're waiting thirty-five minutes for the ambulance to get there, and that parent, family member, wife, husband, whatever's sitting there watching you do CPR, I said, might as well be twenty-four hours.
Well, that's like, I'll play the history for you, because we had Sunday night, I believe it was, after all of our deal, Sunday afternoon, we had a, got a call from a possible crew. Well, that possible crew turned into a cardiac. You know where the ambulance was coming from? Quick. And, and you can't, at the time of the day that they come in, you can't get for Clinton to where this call was, you know, forty-five minutes. Now, I don't know whether, I didn't say that the last time, Eric, you kinda got on me, so I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, thought maybe you had laryngitis.
No, I didn't have laryngitis, but I, I'm, I'm.
You want me to go ahead and say that?
Come on. Come on with it, James.
And stand up.
You're gonna come up there, because my mouse button knows that everybody can hear you.
I know you can.
All right. What you said a minute ago about if we know they're coming. My biggest pet peeve, and once they get there, they do for good. But my biggest pet peeve, and to my understanding, they are supposed to get with our dispatch and tell them where they're coming from and does that enough. They're supposed to be on radio where we can communicate with. My biggest pet peeve, and I've talked to Eric about this, is we've had two or three that ain't never got on the radio. Had one the other night, I ain't told you about this one, but one the other night, he shows up, I was like, y'all, can I ask dispatch? I said, did they call in on the radio right when we got there? No, I ain't heard nothing from them. Number one, and this was in country metal, and we don't have a problem, we took them in, we don't have a problem in running that, none whatsoever. Or anywhere if we're calling, we gonna go. It acted to save us from coming from station one all the way to country metal, because I'm down one rescue. All they had to do was get on the radio and say, where, we're in route from town square to country metal. They pulled up everywhere ahead of us, we got this, you can cancel it, it saved us, you're, you're talking about, you spending money? We spending money on fuel unnecessarily because of blame. I got this, because the blame-angled people will not. A lot of them will, but they won't, and a lot of them won't, and I'm tired of fussing about this. He hates to see my number come up on his phone.
But can I, can I retort about that? James, we talked about that, we talked about that, we talked about that. We have three hundred and fifty employees. Every time you call me, I get onto somebody about it. I can't make everybody do it absolutely every time. They're big, not discarding, that very valid point, a very valid thing to talk about, but there are bigger items to talk about than whether or not we're talking on the radio. Especially when they do call, they don't hear anything from the time they say that they're in route until they get on scene. The whole point of being able to talk on the radio is to be able to, your people, to give us an update about what's going on with patients. Ninety-five percent of the calls, I listen to the radio twenty-four hours a day, never a report given to our crews on the way. So I understand that is an extremely valid point that y'all need to know, but let's discuss that later, please, please.
If they would answer us on the radio, we would do that. Now, like I said, I done brought this up, so we gonna, we gonna, we gonna do this now. I love you to death, bro, but I'm gonna make my point.
I, I understand your point, I've understood it.
I agree, I agree with you, I think, points me.
But when you get there and you ask them about it, and they give you that, they don't give a crap attitude for if they was on the radio or not, or I don't know how, I don't know how to work the radio. I was told that personally, that they don't know how to work the radio. Well, if they don't know how to work the radio, they ain't got no business out here taking care of people.
Well, those, those little things, I mean, those, those.
But with that being said, with the quit, and I'll get off of that, with the penalties and everything, and I was told to ask about this. One thing we have, let me go back in the back of this a little bit. We have sometimes a long wait time. You know? I was asked, that I, that, that, and this is something else, I was asked a couple of weeks ago, when I was started up, about our station too, out there, but they posted out there, I did not have a problem with it. But it ain't my station, well, it is my station, but it's half and half. So I don't give Brett, and give y'all, and whatever y'all said, I was tickled with. And they posted out there. They got their whole setup out there, and I ain't tickled the best of them to be out there if it's helping the situation. Not on Monerayland, but on the south, they can mean for, for, uh, shit, road robbery, they didn't matter what, what group you're in. If it's helping the situation to get there quicker, I got no problem with it, and I am all, all one, them being out there. But when they, and maybe I'm, maybe this is kinda still into working, I don't know. But when they're posting their pearl, they're supposed to be out here, you know, which is, is not that big a distance. But when they are posting out there, and they run one call out here, and they, then take them out, let's just say that they run one call, may not even run a call, and they bring them back into Jackson, and they don't come back out there till they switch trucks at the end of shift, what good is it doing? I'm just asking a question, and I'm gonna blow it off in a minute if I've had a hell of a week this week.
Well, the things you're saying are valid, and like I said, a lot of times, the little things that, uh, correct, uh, correct the big things. But I guess at this point, then I guess, what is it, you're, what you're asking us is how much more we wanna contribute, and what, what, how much bang we can get for the buck. But some of these numbers on these other pages, I almost, I almost feel like they could be a little inflated. But that, I mean, go from where we are now, I mean, it's.
There's a big difference in where you're at right now with what the recommendation of this group was.
Mm-hmm.
And anybody that's done any research on cost of running systems along from what we're.
Carl, have you done any study on this?
To go, to go to a system like what was recommended by this group, it's not cheap by any stretch of the word.
Carl, you.
There's only two ways to offset the cost of running an ambulance service, whether it's government or private or whoever. It's the cost of what you, what you get paid by the patients, and any difference has to be subsidized by somebody.
So what you're saying though is provide level service, we won't, you can't make money at it.
It won't be much, it'd be, it'd be quite honest with you.
So, I mean, there's gotta be a better solution than what's offered today, though.
One of the things that's not on there, you know, the guys talked about it, and we haven't discussed it, you know, and it, it talks about, and we talked about non-transporting units, you know, having the sprint trucks out there. And I don't think that's listed in there, you know, and that's, you know, that could possibly be revisited. Uh, I don't know, well, the three of you may recall, you know, several years ago, we talked about actually putting some rescue trucks, you know, from the county out there, you know, to, to lower the cost, but.
Then you'd have to have some certified.
You're gonna, like I said, I mean.
Wasn't that what I just asked a while ago? What if we put some ambulances out there?
Not ambulances.
Not ambulance, sprint trucks.
Well, what's the difference?
Rescue trucks, I'm gonna, we need a transport unit there.
Yeah.
I, I thought you was talking about a rescue truck in terms of being able to carry some money to the hospital.
No, just talking about, just to.
To keep them, to get them stabilized.
Out there and to help out, but it's still not a transporting unit. We talked about, you know, the benefits of having, you know, an ALS unit, but, you know, it would benefit some people in the county where you could get an advanced life support out there, but he still, we're still on the time side, not gaining anything by not having a transporting unit out there. The transporting unit is, you know, the, the factor that costs so much that, you know, and it's the time factor and the cost factor. That's basically what it is. I mean, you know, having a, you know, it's great to have, you know, a, a paramedic that's responding, but, you know, not so much in the municipalities, because they've got a lot of E, or paramedics.
Right.
But, you know, still not having that transport unit there, you're either gonna have to, you know, get the time down, or, you know, get more transported units. That's what it breaks down to.
And it's not so much about.
Nothing else really helps.
EMS today, the way things are going, you have to remember, it's not so much a taxi service of, hey, I gotta have an ambulance, I gotta get to the hospital. Because more than half of our calls, we take them to the hospital and they go sit in the waiting room.
Yeah.
I mean, there are so many that we go in and drop off, and they sit in the waiting room. So the urgency of a transporting unit to get somebody to the hospital is really going away. I mean, it, it's not as urgent as it used to be.
Let me ask you a question on, uh, that brings up a valid point. I know that y'all usually transport to St. D's or UMMC, is that correct? Do y'all ever transfer to Cross Gates River Oaks at all?
Patient choice, very infrequently.
So is that mandated patient choice or?
We go, we take the patients where they wanna go, because generally, that's where their physicians are, that's where their medical history and records are. And if you tell somebody who's been going to Baptist Hospital for twenty years that they have to go to Rankin or River Oaks, you're doing a patient zero. Because when they get there, that position of season has to start all over.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm gonna bring this up one more time, I brought it up in the panel. This office, we're not gonna get this Plan A, it costs too much. I'm gonna go back to what I asked for, if you can't do the Plan A, why can't you not tell those people when they dial nine one one, we're coming? We're responding from here. Barring anything, and it's gonna be, you know, by, every many minutes, it's gonna be from where they're coming from, getting the.
We've been dealing a lot with them, but here's the, the direct answer to your.
I, I, you know, that's what I've asked before, and I said, if you can't do this, why can't you do this where it at least gives that family out there. If you get the option, I'm not waiting twenty-five, thirty minutes on ambulance, I'm going to the hospital.
Well, let me put it to you this way, and this is exactly the one you don't do. If your caller calls in on nine-one-one, and it's, it's a call in Leesburg for breathing problems or whatever, and the only ambulance I have at that particular time is sitting at Smithville Stadium in Jackson. And I tell that patient, if the ambulance is on the way, they're coming from Smithville Stadium in Jackson. And five minutes into that call, I have a truck that's responding to the reservoir that gets canceled off the call, and now they're magically available. Well, I can't call that person back and say, hey, by the way, one just became available on the reservoir, now they're off. It causes way too much patient confusion. That's where the radio part comes into play, and that's where we can work on that side.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you this, speaking of that, and I, I understand where it's coming from, because I hear them all the time, shoving this, that, and that. But and I know this is gonna sound kinda, but I mean, it's like, if the patient really gives a crap as long as it, somebody gets there quick, it don't matter if he's coming from, from the reservoir, they got canceled, or flown, if you think the patient really cares where he comes from, as long as he gets there quick, I don't. What I mean, it, 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 it don't really happen very much.
Give a lot to him.
We'll get a call or something, and then we don't have an ambulance.
Say this, you take in that.
They don't have to leave them all, and then send them just further away.
You're gonna get that before.
Yeah.
So we're paying a million dollars for this.
Who's fault that is? I don't know, but it's.
And actually, this is slacked a lot in the last year or so.
It depends on what kind of caller you're talking about. Starting with a caller, when someone comes in, they trust you to make it canceled every day.
We just went through, we're getting a brand, and now eight minutes.
We try, and I told my guys, I said, get there and lay them.
They're gonna think I've got enough trucks. My brand have four trucks, five trucks.
Going and calling dispatch, but them trying to thank A more than some counts.
But that's a lot of payers right there.
And that's a lot.
It is.
That's a lot of why I get to that.
And all together, what would.
They might come in, and they might say, dispatch, where they're coming from, our dispatch, and whatever. But then they'll push back on to the other channel, so then we can't tell them, and we can't tell them to cancel, that we don't give a review. I don't know, ladies and gentlemen, it's all the ones having that problem. I don't know, I, I don't know what's setting it up, you know?
But that's twice the population, not three times the population of Brad.
Yeah.
All that together. It's all the way here?
Yeah.
It's all right there?
Bring me something back.
Well, everybody's sitting there, just like we are, going, okay, what do we do, go from here? Where do we go? What, uh, that's the answer right there.
Couple of observations or suggestions, I got whatever percentage or runtime, whatever we come up to, ninety percent, twenty-five, ninety-eight percent.
Whatever percentage or runtime, whatever we come up to, ninety percent, twenty-five, ninety-eight percent, fifteen, whatever we come to. Uh, the outside time, so we do ninety percent fifteen time, fifteen minutes. The ten percent, whatever minute, I think we need to have a cap on that. Um, as we suggested at one point, you know, if we do ninety percent fifteen minutes, and I'm just using this as an example.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Ninety percent of fifteen minutes and then ninety percent of twenty-five minutes unincorporated, I think we need to have a cap where they meet, uh. I think at one point it was like thirty-five minutes, ten percent of the time unincorporated and, well, twenty-five minutes, uh, ten percent of the time incorporated. I think we need to have that there. You know, with the, uh, the penalty assessed, you know, as needed as reviewed and everything. Also, on the overload, I think overload is something we're not gonna be able to do away with, correct? That's something that's gotta be in there, right? I mean, you're always like.
Away with it, there's overload things that seem out to be.
Just from what I see from these numbers, um, option A, fourteen ambulances in the county with an overload of nine calls. Overload is something that exceeds your system capability, right? So if we have fourteen ambulances.
Puts the system out.
If, if we, it puts it in a bind. That still leaves us five ambulances left over after we're working nine calls already. Uh, option B with seven and a half ambulances for a six-call overload will leave us one more ambulance left, which does put you in a bind, I mean, you have to, it gets tied in that. And then where we're at currently is a unknown number of ambulances, you know, the full system to include ambulances in Canton, Byron, Terry, Clinton, wherever. Uh, for a four-call overload, so in theory, we've really been overloaded at any point in time. It's possible to be overloaded at any point in time, given what we've got now, so I think that's a, if, that's a working point right there, something we need to look at and kind of hash out. I don't, it just. Those numbers don't impress me very much, but my thoughts.
Because we currently, well, we're supposed to keep how many now?
Uh, no set number, it's as many as needed to meet the obligations. Could be four, could be twelve, never enough.
And then we added the basic life units. Are we, are we using those at all?
Every single day of the week?
So that should actually, actually put us at maybe five currently.
Those are, those don't respond to emergency calls, so that's not really counted.
But the reason that they're seeing better call times up in the north part of the county and were there more and all this stuff is because the BLS trucks have relieved the tension on the emergency ambulances. So that they could go sit and post for. And starting the twenty-eighth, for our new schedule end, we went from, uh, eight to eleven, so we increased that. We increased it with, with our.
What do you mean, eight from eleven?
We went from eight BLS trucks to eleven.
Simply freeze the paramedics, focus on nine-one-one calls.
So where do we still get calls out of? Cause I thought with, with Brandon do it, they did, that put the nursing homes out of the ballgame, right? So where do you use be, those trucks at now in the county?
Which truck?
Yeah. Where do they come back and forth to though? I mean, where do you carry them back and forth from like River Oaks to a hospital in Jackson?
Hospital, hospital, doctor's office, hospital, residents in the houses, house, residents, doctor's office, the hospital, hospital, doctor's office.
And there's three other person, I'm just here to burn, Briar Hill, um, Delight, River, there, Muggwood, now, yeah. Perry, Perry House.
So there's plenty of need.
Method of specialty.
Okay.
Mine, Bob, man.
So really we need to come up with, uh, basically we need to come up with some kind of, keep to them some numbers till we kind of keep up. Get a, I guess, compromising plan.
But if you wanna see what, I mean, just pull the numbers out, five hundred thousand, I can go back and talk to my team and say, what is five hundred thousand dollars look like? What, what do we have to change to reach that threshold?
That's what I'm saying, we're gonna just keep playing with the numbers till we come up with a compromising. Well, I don't know, I mean, what if you did like a, I don't know, three hundred and a five hundred or, or just kind of give us a big gap in there and kind of see.
If, um, it shouldn't take Jessica long enough, the templates are built, I could come back with a seven fifty, a five hundred, a two fifty, uh, and just to kind of show you.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't, okay, back here.
Is there a cap that the county is willing to spend?
Say what?
Is there a cap that the county is willing to spend towards ambulance service? Not over seven hundred and fifty, not over a million, not over three million?
Well, I know we're not budgeted for any, any of this, so, I mean, extra, obviously. Yes, sir.
Next question is, is percentage gonna be broken up across the municipalities you can, if whoever runs the board will pay more money?
That's a great question. I kind of doubt any municipality is gonna be jumping up and down, wanna pay the bill. Especially when it's a lot easier for them to get their calls taken care of.
But my question is, let's say that y'all did decide go option B, are y'all gonna look for, y'all gonna put that whole bill through the county or are you gonna look for the municipalities to kick in?
To be honest, I wasn't expecting that number to be that big.
No.
We did the research to try and start our own service, I can tell you the numbers are astronomical.
For the city to run their own?
How many trucks were you looking at, Carl?
We did, uh, we did two versions, we looked at doing two trucks with the third on standby and we looked at doing four with the fifth on standby. And between three and a half billion dollars for the two trucks, just to start up, that's not counting your percentages that you're going to pay a billing company to do your work. Also having a returning on retainer, having bed control physician, there's a lot of things at play. But to go high side, just call the four trucks and the fifth on, on standby is nine and a half billion dollars just started calls. And that's not counting your billing and all that because you're not gonna see anything for at least the first nine months. And then I forget what the percentage was, thirty-one percent on collections, so you, you take the, you take the numbers there and it appears.
Yeah.
You're actually giving away, so the issue was, we had a CEO come in, our ex, uh, chief financial officer that had done this before. He told us that we would have to have a stipend sometime within the city to at least pay for the salaries. So it would be a tax on the water bill or something through the place department or where you get that extra money. Figure your budgetary response to employees in, in your operating cost. So that didn't have any guarantee and taxes or something, so.
So what I'd like to know is what the annual operating cost is rather than just the startup. Because, I mean, really that's what we're looking at. Would we be better off paying ourselves to get the service we know we'll get and know what we're gonna have out of pocket? Or we won't pay a company to do that? And that's where we need to find out.
Well, can I say something? I've been kind of listening, I, I, you know, I'm with Brandon's or.
You still in Rankin County?
I know the white elephant, so, but I just, we faced this same dilemma, few months ago, the exact same dilemma. Had basically three choices, we're gonna do what we were doing or either look at a subsidy to get both services in or do our own. Then we suddenly realized, well, let's see what else is left. And that's why we did what we did, AMR, could you, you know, and we wanted to. So that's, that's how we came up with numbers, by going out and seeing what actually is available for what costs. Uh, because, you know, if you look at numbers based on AMR's figures, they're, they're, they have a lot of overhead. So it, it takes more to operate all the way through versus who would? And I'm not trying to pass our service off from anybody, I don't want anybody to think that, cause I, I'm not. All I'm saying is, as a Rankin County taxpayer, and subsidies being talked about, I would want to know who's gonna provide the best service for a subsidy if there is one required. You know, overall, that's just my viewpoint, and I'm not trying to push A M R out at all, I like you guys. But, you know, that being said, what kind of service you, you can get with what's being, what's gonna be paid? The only way you can do that is just like we do everything in the counties and cities, we look, we shop it. See what's there? Maybe right back in here again in a month, you know, saying, and AMR's got, you know, the, you don't look so bad, you know? So I just wanna make that point without stepping out of bounds, because I'm not trying to, and I'm not trying to push what Brandon's doing on any other than this thought. But from a taxpayer's standpoint, from the county, if money's about to be spent, I wanna see what is gonna be spent on the best service, if it's on the best service.
Chief, let me ask you on, uh, I kind of go back to what I asked earlier on, cause I'm from Brandon also. So if I'm, if I call for an ambulance, do I get to choose which hospital I get to go to from Pafford?
That's correct.
Okay, so where is most of them going? Are they going to St. D's, UMMC?
Majority's going over into downtown Jackson.
Are they?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, we did, we asked the question, you know, where, where do you, where do you wanna be transported to? And just like Sam said, a lot of them have doctors there and.
Right.
You know, we, we accommodate that now. We have cases, and we've, we've done it twice so far, that we, we were down to one truck, just like AMR gets down to, no trucks, one truck.
So they get stuck up there also, just like.
Well, we get, what we do is we transport them to Crossgates River Oaks, which is Merrick now.
Right.
We get there, we stabilize the patient if, if needed, then once we get back, we transport them home to UMC or St. Dominique's, no charge. So it's only one transport. That's how they handle it.
So basically they start at Crossgates River Oaks.
If we get into an overload where we have to do that, so far we've had that happen five times.
So the patient's gonna get a bill from each hospital?
I'm not sure about that.
I would think they would.
Yeah.
Probably so, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't do it for free over here, Crossgate's just to hold it on.
But now, saying all that, the pa, the patients we've done too, that we went up there and they ended up getting checked out at Merrick and left.
Yeah.
But we, we hadn't had to do that inline transfer as, yeah, now, I'm not saying we wouldn't.
Right.
Within our, within the health department or state health department's regulations, it says to transport the patient not to negatively affect the response criteria of the responding agency. Or to the nearest emergency facility within that district, that's how it's written. Uh, Stan, I mean, if I'm misplugged, yeah. So what that does, it allows you, in cases of emergency, to go to that nearest facility, get stabilization or make sure the patient's carried forward in the best way we can.
Right.
That's what it's about.
And that's what I had heard, but I didn't, I wanted to clarify to make sure.
Now, we, we, early on, we, we wasn't gonna push patients to go to, to River Oaks or Merrick.
Right.
Because that, that just wouldn't be, uh, that wouldn't be the thing to do.
Right.
And, and we do realize the doctor, patient loyalty type thing goes on with the patients, especially in Rankin.
Exactly, okay.
Well, I, I feel sure. We're gonna have some knocking around our door here soon, I mean. When this contract is ready to be renewed, I think we're up to sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. End of, end of sixteen, first part of seventeen.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna wait that long. I think we're gonna have to do something sooner than later. I'm not saying we're gonna get a new business, I'm just saying we're gonna have to change what we're doing.
So what are you, what are you saying there, Jay?
Well, how, how do we spend money without going through a bid process?
What we're talking about here is amendments to the great voluntary.
It's just amendments, okay.
Right.
Adjusting the contract.
Okay. Well, okay, back in the back. Carl sees a hand.
How comfortable are you about making this decision with the elections coming up? I'm just asking a pointy question, I mean.
Well, ain't but one of us running for reelection at this table, so.
But my, my question is, is how comfortable and how serious are y'all wanna move on this as the elections are coming up?
But Jay's the one you gotta talk to.
And I don't think that's gonna have anything to do with it.
I'm confident.
Personally, I mean, I, I, I don't, I'm not wanting to spend a million dollars a year, uh, we can't afford that.
No.
So, I mean, it's not that I don't want us to have the best healthcare possible, it's just that, you know, just like today, we had them show us a building, you know, for twenty million dollars. We ain't got twenty million dollars to spend on a building either. So, I mean, we just have to.
Oh, it's very pretty, pretty nice. Hey, you know, to answer your question, we, I don't think. I don't think that's a, really a factor, obviously, we don't have a million dollars to be put out there. But we need to look at whatever we need to do to try to improve. And then at a later date, if we can, when, you know, budget time, maybe we could improve more. But, um, I mean, I don't think you can go wrong and try to improve your ambulance service and everybody would, understands that. And we're all compassionate and that's one reason I'm glad that you're, you all are here, because you see these dollar figures to see the, the amount of money. And, and like some of you said, doesn't, I know you can't do, um, exhibit a Plan A. I think we just, at this point, we're just gonna have to start, we need to get you to put together, um. Let's, let's say you start at seven fifty and work your way down and let's see what we can, can get to improve what we have. And it's not gonna be the perfect. Plan, but it's gonna be an improvement. And then I think there again, we need to keep on looking to be able to improve. But there's no way we can afford to just boom, take on this and, and I think everybody in this room would, understands that. But I, I'm all for making an effort to improve and any improvement is, is better than some of the problems we're having. Which the biggest problem is simply just the, the response time and we all, we all know that.
I, I think the service y'all offer, once you get on scene is great, from what I hear. But I, I think it would be crazy if you don't realize though that if Pearl probably ain't gonna go with Brandon, if they can get the coverage they need and no money out of pocket. Then we're gonna be right back here looking and saying, all right, well, y'all gonna charge us to take care of the rest of the county.
But in all fairness to tell me, well, go ahead, Chip.
I got a question.
I figured you did, you had your hand up.
I would probably say. Close to fifty of my, fifty percent of my ambulance calls are not necessary.
Right.
I mean, I had a lady the other night, she fell at the skate in Lincoln, Jackson, drove all the way home and one of her friends told her, you need to go to hospital, you didn't look that. She called an ambulance.
Right.
I got there and I've been bad about this lately because I'm really peeved about. Of ambulance abuse, because when we get emergencies, we can't get the ambulance that we need because they're taking this jump, you know, this.
Right.
You know, she drove all the way home from a skate in Lincoln, Jackson, and then she wanted an ambulance to take her. Back to Jackson to the hospital.
A taxi cab.
Exactly.
Yeah.
She drove herself down there in the car and a lot of their mentality is, oh, I go into ambulance, I can be seen and watched.
Yeah, right.
Medicare, so it's not gonna cost her nothing. But yet, and I've here lately, I've been telling, you can ask some of my guys that's been here with me, I, I, y'all may even get some calls on. Cause I've been chewing on pretty good, you're wasting an emergency ambulance that could kill somebody because that ambulance is tied up, coking you and.
Right.
My whole deal is, could we spend some money in the county? Advertise, could AMR do it? I know it's gonna take some money out of their pocket, but a lot of times the way I look at it is, these people that are abusing the ambulance aren't paying the bill anyway.
Well, that's.
It's gonna, it would be a cost savings to AMR because they wouldn't get, um. A, um, wasting an ambulance and not get paid. I've got one house in my community and I've got pretty ugly with them the last couple of weeks. I've been there fifty-something times in the last twelve months. Who calls an ambulance fifty-something times?
Richard, I did.
That's crazy. The last time I was there. It, it was. Basically, it was a female spot in Littlewood and she wanted to go to the hospital to get checked out. And, um.
She called you?
Basically, went and woke her boyfriend up out of bed and told him to get his blood up, get in the car and take her to the hospital, and I canceled ambulance. So.
Fifty-something.
I think, and if I'm, if I'm running six, seven hundred calls that I have an ambulance coming to, and two to three hundred calls a year of my ambulances are wasted.
Right.
On non-emergency, how many other ambulances are wasted?
So, that's a great point, so how do we stop that?
Yeah, we, and what you're saying, a PR campaign, they may help some.
Let's get it, let's stop.
We, we understand that.
One ordinance in place that every chief's aware of, and if they violate the ordinance.
But how does a violation of an, when they're technically having them? And, and, and I thought about that, and that girl will definitely need to go to the doctor and see a doctor, but.
It wasn't you that needed to be taken her.
But do I still have an, uh, uh, now want to use on that?
You want to, that's up to you.
Well, I'm just wondering if we could do some promotion and education by newspaper, TV, news, print some flyers, let us hand them out to these people, explaining that, hey, just because you're going in ambulance don't mean you're going to walk right into ER.
Right.
I may be swimming upstream, but, but my thought is, if we could prevent some of the calls with maybe some dispatchers who are better trained at filtering some of these calls, that whether they're basic calls, transfer them to, to AMR, let AMR send a basic unit to it, which I feel would, would possibly serve the, the county a lot better, a lot of less wear and tear, me buying hound and breath of the tires, that kind of thing. I just think, if, if, and y'all may completely disagree with me, but if we had some dispatchers that were slowing that call down, saying, not, not, not changing it, but saying, it's really not a, an emergency, a life-threatening emergency. AMR, it's a basic call, you handle it with your basic truck that y'all have already approved them to do, instead of sending a fire truck to it every single time. Couldn't we work some of this into the dispatch side of it, and maybe take some of this burden that, that we're asking y'all to, to give, and you to pay for? Could we take some of that off of everybody?
But the BLS truck's only allowed to run in the, in the county on calls that are coming in as pre-scheduled, transferred, not, it can't come in through nine one one, is that right? Can't, we can't send the basic truck.
Is that a health department's rule or?
That's a county, that's a county.
It's a county rule.
And why can't a BLS truck run on all priority two calls? And not single priority?
I don't know.
I mean, is it that much cheaper to run a BLS ambulance versus an ALS ambulance?
So, it's not as cheap as you think it is. It really.
I, I can't really see, because you're not, I mean, basically, the only difference is a paramedic, which is ten or fifteen dollars more.
Yeah, well, it's.
It's some equipment differences and it's some salary differences, it's not that kind of amount.
So if we turn y'all loose.
Education with abusing the ambulance service, and then we wouldn't have to be tied up on calls.
I agree.
We talked about that issue a little, and there are some places that have started, uh, education campaigns, Vegas, Las Vegas being one of them. As with anything, I have an old boss, and I always said you can always find the liability or church group about to do something, really. And there's always liability associated with that kind of effort. There's liability associated with having to nurse to screen calls, for example, like some folks have done, or, or we've talked about the concept of, uh, paramedic initiated reviews, you, the paramedic association, you really don't need an ambulance, well, that's fraught with liability too. We're open to all of those options.
But we're open to all, we're open for liability any which way we go.
Sure, there's cities, there's cities out west now that's gotten so bad where the, the county commissioners or city council members now have actually made it a misdemeanor for nine one one, when you call nine one one and it's not an emergency, you're charged with misdemeanor. That's how overwhelmed the systems are.
We're looking, we have to look at anything, education is obviously a critical.
Because I really truly believe that if we knock out all these non-emergency calls and these frequent flyers that go all the time by ambulance, I bet you I have twenty or thirty households that I go to ten or more times a year. And if I really looked at the numbers, it may be a hundred households that I go to ten or more times a year. Who dials nine one one ten times or more a year? I've never done it, and I'm forty years old.
Same thing people probably have to be educated.
I mean, it's everywhere, Chip, now, Terry's gone in Brandon. Scott, I know you. It, it's, uh, I mean, you can only do as much as you can do.
But, and I, I thought you were going to be in on what Stan just said, the, the problem is, when you started doing the dispatchers filter out, or the medics filter out, we've had it happen to us already a few times, it comes in as priority two, it's not that big a deal, and then all of a sudden, whoo, it blows up, and, and the patient's in cardiac arrest, and you don't have an ALS ambulance coming, and you got to reroute, and luckily, we've been close enough to switch things around. But, um, you know, with AMR, you know, they, they send a BLS truck, then they don't allocate that ALS truck, and status changes, then it's, all of a sudden, they got to reallocate a truck to go back around, so those few that fall through the crack creates a huge liability for everyone who's running the bus.
Which is risky around tiered system.
So you got to be real careful about filtering because of those situations, because, I mean, a person to call in and have, uh, uh, having a heart attack, and they say, what? My stomach's hurting a little bit, I'm sweating a little bit. You think, okay, you know, but turns out, I mean, it's full-blown heart attack and cardiac arrest.
But you know, if you wait till you get, I mean, if you wait till you get to the scene, and you get there, and this is not life-threatening, it is something, I mean, I've had them for broke toes to broke fingers, I mean, any little thing you can think of, they're going to call an ambulance call.
Yeah, see, if we had a broken heart.
Yeah. You know, if I have one, and they kid has rock stuff in his ear, why you need an ambulance call? You know? You know, if, if anything, we get there, or the ambulance gets there, they just say, okay.
Craig.
Let's get Marcus on them all for the paper each week.
I guess, that ambulance transport, he's going to be out of the system for an hour, an hour and a half, and it's not two hours, three hours, since it went into the hospital.
Yeah, I was just going, I wasn't aware when we, when y'all approached us about doing the basic life support ambulances, that we had an option of allowing them to go on calls. If we were allowed to turn you loose on that, is that going to increase our runtimes?
Oh, absolutely.
Today?
I didn't know it was an option either, I thought we had a one, one choice.
Yes, yeah.
When we presented it, we said that there's, there's two ways you can do it, you can do a tiered system, which is risky in some, in some cases, like Terry was describing. Or you can take a, a more stable, pre-screened approach and allow them to do non-emergency scheduled trips, where they're doing nothing more than going to physicians.
Okay.
Now, if you want to look at what it would look like to run a tiered service, with BLS responding to priority twos, or, I, I'm not going to do that without recommending that you put some more sprint medic cars out there, because if a BLS call turns into an ALS call when they get there, who knows where an ALS ambulance may be at the time, and a sprint truck can get there a whole lot quicker. So there's, yes, there's options like that.
Turn that, turn that basic life support truck into an ALS truck in a hurry, or a sprint truck, because he's got everything, or she's got everything, that some, the ambulance accepts.
So for us to do any of that, we're going to need to amend the contract.
Exactly, yes.
We have a lot of work to do to make that happen. I'm aware of one study that says, uh, and it's a pretty old study, that says eleven percent of patients who were pre-ordered by dispatch and understood if the BLS patients are actually in need of some ALS. Eleven percent, eleven percent, I can show you the study.
Which probably, if you turn it on, if you, eleven percent probably acted between that and fifteen. On average, Rankin County transports thirty-four to thirty-six patients a day. So you may have three or four people that are misdiagnosed by nine one one triage, that really need a, a paramedic, and they, they get a basic.
That's crazy.
That's, that's where the risk is at.
That's a better model, you just, because that's.
Say what? Say it again.
That's a better model, percentages, and everybody in the room deals with numbers, and you deal with percentages, percentages of runs, time on target.
Right.
Percentage of dollars, but it's really people. And it's, what does it cost to make the right thing happen? And it's a balance, you know, we talked the other day, you got to balance those things out. But right now, that balance is a little too far, it was for me when I was in it, and I'm gone, I'm just a citizen.
Right.
Lives here. But, uh, uh, it's a little out of balance at the moment, so we need to balance those scales somewhere. And there's multiple ways to do that, actually.
Okay. All right, then, then why don't you, why, and all that being said, then why don't you do just what we're asking, only tweak it with some of these options that we're, I guess, I wasn't aware of, the way you presented it in the beginning, but tweak it some and see how you think that's going to affect the response time. If we, and, and just kind of put a little package together, because you know what we're trying to, what our goal is, and you know we're not going to be able to get the ultimate goal.
Right, I, I can give you a, a presentation and a dollar figure on what it would look like running a tiered system. Let me caution you on a couple of different things, number one is, those, those cases will occur, because it, there, there are very few places across the country that are going to the tiered system, Los Angeles County Fire Department does it, they do a beautiful job of it, it works perfect. Um, the, the biggest thing that we as a community, and I live here too, it's going to take some public education, because right now, when an ambulance gets out on scene, they can do anything and everything, and that will not be the case with these other trucks.
Well, no, what I'm saying, okay, I agree with you.
I think Chief Elder wants to add something.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say a couple of things that, that would mind.
Sure.
One thing that, that, there's a, I think, a small misconception, although, is that municipals run times are always within a ten or fifteen minute time, which they're not. I mean, we have times that we have to wait twenty, thirty minutes too. Well, what we've done is we've put in, um, systems to alleviate the issue where it's really not that big of a problem, and the way we do it is we run medics on the truck, on our pump. We had the, pretty much the exact capability as the ambulance except for transport, and what that's extended us to the capability of doing is taking our patients, we've started patient care at, you know, four and a half, five minutes, and we can provide that patient care until that transport unit gets there. We can stabilize the patients, we can work the code, we can take care of the diabetic, and by that point, if we have a twenty, thirty minute response time, okay. I, I mean, it's not the best work, the best, you know, scenario to be in, but as long as the patient's being cared for, that's the most important thing.
It, it eases the family's mind much, yeah, greatly.
You're caring for the patient, and that's what we're all here for, everyone does that, I mean, what, you know, how fast we put them in, because even if an ambulance shows up, they got to stabilize the patient before they transport, so even if they get there in four minutes, it's usually fifteen or better before they actually leave anyway. So we're just taking that element out of it. One thing I would like y'all to at least consider on this, if you start talking subsidies, regardless of, those subsidies would go a lot further. If they will invest it back into the departments to help train medics by monitors, get them out in the field, then we know, because regardless of the amount of trucks that come up, we're always not going to have enough. You know, I mean, if we put seven in the county, we're going to need that, somebody will have enough, we know that, the system is always being, uh, abused. You know, we may have to do a, a combination of, do some subsidies to try to help ease the truck, but if we could increase the training in the county, get more medics in the county, in embedded areas, and be able to provide the care to the patient, it might be an option that would alleviate some of the stresses that come, because it's not as much time as the stress going, you can't do nothing like wait, you know, I think that's one of the big things, it's a problem. Uh, and I mean, this is a very, very, you know, it's, it's a rough system because there's no action to fix it, I mean, you know.
Right.
Regardless of what we do, we're not going to fix the situation.
I'm, I'm glad you said that.
I mean, I, I mean, and it, this is, is, I mean, that's just so large reality, if anybody says that you can fix this problem, I, I mean, they're, they're being totally naive because it's not going to get fixed. Uh, you can throw money at it, I don't think that's going to be the answer to everything. I think we need to really look at what it's going to take to get patient care to the patient, and then what can we can do to ensure a good, reasonable time with that as far as response time, and then it gives the ambulance service a little bit of leeway, and it also gives us the capability to take care of that person while we're working.
I think a little bit, a little bit of problem with that is in the rural, I mean, the, uh, with the volunteers, you could have a very well-trained person, but they couldn't, it just may be a time they couldn't make it.
Whether it's a county sprint truck, an AMR.
Yeah, well, and that was, I was going to say, on your, I guess it'd be your sprint trucks, is that what we're, so, is there not a way that somebody that's qualified to do just what he's saying could be on them? I mean, are they already?
Eric's already doing that right now.
That's what I do every day.
Eric does it.
Well, that, you're one. Yeah.
He's one on a ten-hour shift.
Huh?
He's one on a ten-hour shift for the rest of the day.
Right.
It turns into sixty-some weeks, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
There are options to increase sprint care management.
So, you know, if we looked at possibly something like that, and we went with a, just looking, what we talked about earlier, possibly looking at a hundred thousand, a two, two fifty, and a five hundred?
Well, actually, I think we were talking about them coming back with a tiered system, doing, incorporating basic life, but not necessarily a dollar amount attached to it.
Okay, good.
Well, that, or you could even add a few, add a little more increase of.
We can still do the models at the seven fifty, five hundred, less than.
I wouldn't go to seven fifty.
I, I don't think, we, we can't do a seven fifty.
So we started the model at five hundred and we can work down.
Work down.
And do a, a model that shows.
Right.
Right.
We can shorten the money all we want to, but that's still keeping FD tied up, I don't care that Scott up the road for, uh, I mean, a career staff truck, or is my apology? You're still keeping FD out of the system for how, however long it takes to transport, because we need to be able to transport the patients. Because if, if I'm there, or I get there, or medical call, means I can't respond to the next call or, you know, a fire.
Right. But once.
I'll tell you what, Jeffrey's, that's got his guys going, eighty percent of the time, when I get on scene with them, if it's just me, they're back in service. They may sit there with me for a minute to make sure I don't need anything, or else whatever, but they're back in service, they're available. When I'm there, I, unless the patient is dying, I can handle them. I mean, it, it, that's not, I mean, that's really not that big of an issue.
But it is in the communities, because when the, the community says the fire comes up and leaves before that patient leaves, it looks on us. It comes back to us, it's all to your job, not to any jobs you left.
Well, I don't think so, because.
Yeah, it does, it does, we've had it happen.
I don't know, I felt like my child be here for me, it bothered me.
You know, you're a county board, but what, what some people are missing, what's going to happen, money when Carl Keating goes aside the contract with Rule Metro?
I would think he is.
Jeffrey Welborn goes aside the contract with ASAP and.
What's going to happen to this county fire department at that time? There's no ambulance service going to come in and want to provide a county-only, uh, Pele Hadji, Langford, Walters response area. So, like Jay said, something needs to be done pretty hastily, if not, the county, the county fire department, not the municipal guy, they're going to be left in the wind, is what I see coming, because, uh, Brandon did what was best for Brandon, I'm not against them for doing that, if I lived in Brandon, I would want four ambulances at my house within a minute. What that has created is, it's created Pearl to go do the same thing, whoever, Pafford, AMR, uh, Rule Metro, ASAP, AAA, these ambulance services, they're out there now. Now, they know they can come into Rankin County and, and get on board with the municipality, what's going to happen to Langford, what's going to happen to Walters?
Well, one thing I don't.
One day, this could happen tomorrow.
I got a respectful disagreement, and you threw our name out there, I don't, I don't think we need to hastily make a decision, I think that's where we'll.
Wrong word, I used the wrong word.
Lose some, you know, money on one side or the other, uh, lose response, care, overall patient goal is to finish the care, I think we'll lose that, without a doubt, I thought, now.
Right.
I agree, patiently, it's the wrong word, I'm just.
Right, right, but, okay, go ahead.
Just a question, I mean, you know, AMR, which are the largest service provider in the United States?
Correct.
So you got plenty of experience to draw from throughout the country. Uh, question I got, or a statement, I guess, I got is, we're heard tonight, the answer to better services, more money from the county. My question is, have you guys, can you assure this group that you've done your due diligence, studied the situation from top to bottom, everywhere you've looked at, and there's no room for improvement, allowing another two or three hundred thousand dollars in the county?
Absolutely, because this is, this is not a from Jackson plan, I, I've looked at it, my club.
I, I've looked at it, my twelve weeks from Sunday. So have my finance teams in Gulfport and, uh, Colorado Springs. So have my system design people in Pueblo, Colorado and Colorado Springs. But this is not a, this just came out of my office, trying to say.
You know, you, we've bumped around, you keep, I know we're throwing out the Brandon, the service they have and talking about Pearl, whatever now, but. And all honestly, honesty, they can't keep up that service for nothing. Well, if they get Pearl and more, they can, because they gonna have a limited response area. They won't have to go out in the county. They might, they might can. It would, they may can. Well, I, I imagine Pearl and Brandon probably makes up fifty percent of our calls. They don't? What percentage is it about?
It's probably, uh, about a third, I think.
Well, it's probably enough for a company to come in and make money at. Y'all probably wouldn't mind that, would you? Just having Pearl and Brandon not have to worry about the rest?
Well, I'm gonna reserve some time.
I prob, probably should. Go on, throw him out there, Jay. Well, I mean, it's reality.
From a financial perspective and I, with every ambulance service in the world is the same. The only difference on the side is a sticker and a little bit of variable cost and operation. I, I can't sit here and say one bad word about the group that they went with because I don't know anything about. I can tell you, from, from running an ambulance shop and looking at the financials that I used to not do when I was responding to the Red Bull. Uh, four ambulances in a city with that call population is not going to sustain itself long term. Now, I, I haven't looked at what it is if, if you're operating other municipalities on board because I, I just have.
Right.
But I, I don't, in the back of my mind, crunching numbers and looking at things. And, and I know that their cost to do a business or the other little smaller companies is probably less than ours.
Yeah, the overhead, sure.
But I, it just, in today's world with reimbursements the way they are and the way that the hospitals are trying to push people to stay at home instead of coming in. And I know what we get paid on certain runs and it's absolutely insane. Uh, I, I just don't see how it'll sustain itself long term.
Well, just to clarify, there's four trucks in Brandon. Don't mean there's four trucks up and running twenty-four seven.
Right.
So everybody's gets the four trucks in their mind, you know, we got four trucks sitting over there. But we've got redundancy plans in place that were worked out early on, demand those trucks in event of overload. There's only two trucks running in Brandon, ACLS trucks.
Okay.
So we got one doing transfers, which is COVID. I think somewhere a couple hundred a month, I think, when that can understand, I think. I can't remember, something, just transfers. When I get the numbers, they're all put together. But, you know, a hundred and fifty transfers just to minimize it a month in, um, nursing home type stuff. So we got a unit handling that and they're dedicated to that. But we have the capability of spinning up other units through different mechanisms for redundancy because, remember, we're the island. You remember that was the problem when we were doing this, we were gonna be an island and we offered. And, uh, so we had to have systems at once. And that's the reason it was feasible. No, it's not feasible if you're running twenty-four seven trucks for a truck. No, I mean, it's easy to do math. That's how we do it.
Well, I guess that's really not the issue at hand, but he just kept coming up. But, well, are you, uh? Well, I think where we go from here is AMR is gonna come back with us a tiered plan that's gonna incorporate basic life ambulances. Does everybody agree with that? I mean.
As an option to look at?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking, that's, yeah, we're not putting anything in stone. We're looking at it and that's. And we wanna do it rather quickly, you know, uh, cause we do appreciate the problem.
Yeah, not hastily, quickly.
You just thank for that word.
Uh, and I really appreciate y'all, y'all's patience to keep coming back out. But this is the only way, I mean, you, you spoke up a lot tonight. We got a lot of input from you and you, you intermingled in the, in the conversation and that, that meant a lot. Cause I, I got a lot from you. Whatever you said, and I think they did too.
Helps every one of us, cause I can assure you, we're, we're not the professionals up here. We don't claim to be, but you guys are out there with the people. So that's why we appreciate y'all's input because we don't take it lightly.
Yeah. Anyway. So when can, when can we meet again? Well, how much longer, I mean, what time, timeframe do you all need?
Uh, the financial lady that does, does all that part is, uh, on vacation until Tuesday next week. And it'll probably take her a couple of days, cause she'll be in the middle of closing the books for the month prior. So a week, maybe.
Well, why don't, well, you could just let us know and Bob, you can, or Bob know. He'll let us know and you send it all out here in Brett. It'd be nice if you could come up with some, you know, real numbers of what you think you can respond to the rural community too. Oh, definitely. Be able to meet it and.
Yes, sir Brett.
Why don't we, uh, y'all's next meeting's on the.
Fifteenth.
Why don't we shoot for that? That way all of the, the firm, you gotta go ahead and put that together and plan on being here.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, I don't know, our fifteenth meeting's in the morning.
Yeah, but we're talking about recess.
We talk recess and come back in the evening?
About that age, bro. While everybody has time to put on the cameras and work schedule.
Make sure everybody's been to the Ohio Ranch by five again.
I think. Let's see. Yeah. Yeah, that means, yeah, I don't have anything there.
If Wednesday night is a problem because church, I mean, it's church night, that next night.
I mean, we could recess it till the next night on Thursday night.
I'll be out of town.
Jay's not gonna be here.
I'm leaving that morning. I'll be gone for a few days.
I just go and set it.
Walter will be here.
All right. Go and set it. We're gonna set it for fifteen?
Yeah.
As many as y'all be here fifteen would be great. So. Again, I, I'd really appreciate your, your input tonight. I think we got, I feel like we made a little footprint the other night. I didn't feel that way, but tonight I do, really do. So thank y'all. If y'all have any input over the next couple of weeks, it'd be nice to have too. Y'all have any suggestions for us going forward? Be much appreciated. Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. All right.
Just a comment I'd like everybody to leave on is remember, if you're thinking about this stuff, we're not, we're, we're working on numbers, but we're not working on numbers. We're working on what's best for somebody in this room, wife, son, or daughter, or grandmother, something like that. Fire department, AMR, uh, six wing, air ambulance, whatever it is, just somebody's family member. So everybody keep that in mind.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but the, the numbers are part of what, are the solution to that. I agree with you. I mean, if money wasn't an object, I think we could.
Oh, it'd be a perfect world.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be on this side sometimes. Uh, okay. Do what?
Need to adjourn recess.
Till when?
Fifteenth?
Yeah, we just adjourned. Yeah. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion, uh, adjourn till the fifteenth at nine AM.
Certainly.
Six.
I'm sorry, the sixth. Well, I said fifteen, I was thinking Monday, the sixth.
Okay, motion to adjourn to the sixth, Bob, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Key. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Here, I got one more thing for, we're not adjourned, if they got nothing to do with what we're talking about. Um, y'all know my situation, they'll say, y'all hold it up in there, I'm coming to talk to you. Oh. Y'all know my situation, I got anything else to say. Put your leg in the rug, there's more.
All right.